Okay.
All right. We'll call this, uh, meeting to order this evening and, uh, let the record show that all board members are present along with our superintendent and our board attorney. Would you please stand for prayer and pledge with Ms. Agner?
Let's pray. Lord, we just thank you for this beautiful evening that you've given us. We thank you for this freedom that we have to come to this meeting and to exercise our rights to do what is best for the children of this county and for the teachers and the all involved. Lord, we just pray that you give us the wisdom and knowledge in the decision-making that we make. Lord, we just ask that you keep us, all our students, safe. And we pray now, this special time of the year, that all people will be closer to you. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brings us down to the adoption of the agenda, and we need to make note that, uh, there's been an added item of twelve point thirteen. That's of establishment of position. Uh, twelve point fifteen would be the job description approval and twelve point twenty-six would be the approval salary schedule. Uh, those items have been added along with that. We do need to add, uh, a recognition moment because we do have, uh, a recognition this evening. So with that said, do I have a, a motion?
A motion? Would this be the time I ask a quick question? On that, uh, establishment of the district athletic director, does that include the head coach? Is that all in one? Okay. So we're gonna call it district athletic director.
That will, that will be an action item, so it will be discussed around the table. Ms. Mathis makes the motion that we adopt the agenda. Ms. Dunell makes the second on that. All in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. The approval of minutes, uh, for November the fourteenth, which was an organizational meeting.
Motion.
Aye. Ms. Agner makes the motion. Ms. Carlton seconds. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Uh, and also the, on the fourteenth, the regular school board meeting.
Motion.
Uh, Ms. Carlton makes the motion that we approve that. Ms. Dunell, uh, seconds it. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And this brings us down to our recognition.
Okay. I'm gonna, um, let Ms. Peel take this away. She can tell you how this was done. I did this so great the other day. So every year, you get on this bill, come on. You're good. Every year, um, our district nominates, they have an instructional person and a non-instructional employee. Does that, and then we also have a human together. I'll just say that our district non-instructional is a few years late.
Yeah.
Board members?
Board members.
Uh, yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Karen.
I'll try now.
My girl is saying, but he took a bite. All right. One, two, three, good.
We already have the hope we love for her. So Ms. Maynor, she works at the district office. Well, she works a lot and like. Can you show us what you do every morning? Do you wanna show them? So she helps in the morning, but she often. And I will say, everybody was so complimentary of her, especially being that policy guard in primary. That is the busiest intersection between the elementary and the primary and dealing with parents coming in and parking to walk the babies in and then the parents drop them off and she gets nothing but compliments all the time. And that is a very difficult job, you know. Hopefully, she's not. And her husband is a major workforce leader. Her husband is a major workforce leader.
All right. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Aye. This brings us down to the items of interest by the public. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board on an issue of the, of the, uh, district at this time? Anyone? Yes, ma'am? Come on up.
We're hard of hearing, so we need to make sure we.
Um, hi, I'm Kathy Crowder from the elementary school. And I just wanted to thank you for everything you guys do for us, but, and I wanted to say, as you meet and discuss, um, our, the union's contract proposals, I just hope that you really keep in mind how this impacts the teachers that are impacting our kids. Okay? Um, you know, if you could stay, of course, legal and think outside the box and give equitable and reimbursement, reimbursement, you know, equitable salary raises to teachers across the board, it would mean the world to us. And I know I only had three minutes, but, and I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I just wanna say, this is in your hands. We trust you and we need you to trust us. And we need, we really, right now, with all of the things that have impacted this town, we really need that feeling of respect. Because morale is hard and this would help. And sooner rather than later would be nice.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. Anyone else?
I'm Charlotte, secretary of the Non-Instructional Association, and I did show everything she said to our hard-working teachers, as well as the lowest-paid employees in the district, which I represent on the non-instructional side. So we appreciate you keeping us in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aye. Anyone else? If not, uh, thank you for your comments and your thoughts to the board. Uh, this moves us into our agenda. All of the consent items were approved by the adoption of the agenda. So this brings us down to item, uh, twelve point thirteen. And this is an establishment of position. Superintendent Scherz is requesting to establish a district athletic director position. This position will be an eight-hour, twelve-month and will be paid on the administrative salary schedule.
Motion.
All right. Ms. Mathis makes that motion.
Second.
All right. Ms. Dunell seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item twelve point fifteen is a job description, uh, that needs to be approved for this district athletic director.
Motion.
All right. Ms. Dunell makes that motion. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion? All right. If not, all, you know, that's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. Item twelve point twenty-six is the approval of salary schedule, and that includes the district athletic director.
Motion.
All right. Who made that motion?
Deidra.
Okay. Ms. Carlton?
No, Deidra made the motion.
Okay. Ms. Dunell, okay. Second. Ms. Carlton seconds it. Any discussion?
I have a quick question. On the, uh, salary schedule, approval of the salary schedule, is that based on experience?
It's a placement schedule.
That's the placement?
Yes.
So it, that could vary depending on, or is that just?
That would be, that first line is always, like, if they have no experience at all.
Okay.
But if they have experience, they would move.
Right. Okay.
As it, you know, as it says in that particular, it's gotta be specific to that. You can't just have experience and.
Right. Or anything.
Yes, ma'am.
Exactly. Gotcha.
Okay. Any other? If not, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried.
Mr. Lundey?
Um, this brings.
Mr. Lundey.
Go ahead.
Can, can you all clarify on the record that this is only a placement schedule, that you all make your motion accordingly? Because I don't want anybody to be confused that when they see these steps, that they think they're getting those bumps every year.
Yes, ma'am.
It does, it's not noted on there. I know that's what we all intend, but if you could just make the motion consistent with that, so, just with that clarification.
It is a placement schedule. Yes.
I'll make a motion that that is the placement schedule, not bumping every year.
It needs to go back into the motion, doesn't it?
It does, yes. So you may.
Deidra made it.
Deidra made the motion.
I made the most, motion, this is a placement schedule. It's nothing stated that this is a bump on a yearly or annual basis.
Okay. You second that? Okay. And, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Aye, so carried. All right. This brings us down to item point fifteen point oh-two. This is a public hearing moment. Uh, the, Ms. Rudd of the Director of Instru-, of Instruction is asking approval of policy and authorization, uh, to approve the updated homeless policy, five point one eight one, which identifies and defines substandard housing. And of course, this is an updated item necessary due to the Hurricane Adelia.
Motion.
All right. Ms. Mathis makes that motion. Ms. Agner seconds it. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So carried. And this brings us down to the items of interest by the superintendent and board and, uh, Ms. Scherz.
All right. So I'll give this, board members, I'll be happy to, um, send you an email of this as well, but if you wanna make note right now, y'all asked me what, you know, like concerts were gonna go on and stuff, so I reached out to the schools and asked them to provide when the band, winter band concerts would, concerts would be, excuse me, and things like that. So I can tell you, um, at Steen Hatchie, that last week of school, they have a lot of Christmas, um, field trips that are planned for their kids for good behavior and, and things, you know, that were, I don't wanna say were not much, but you know, they're doing with their kids. So that's Steen Hatchie Primary. I haven't, I have not, I don't have their list yet. Elementary, they have their good behavior field trips and their PBS and attendance rewards days. That was li-, that last week. TCMS, the winter band concert is on December the nineteenth in their auditorium at six o'clock. Taylor County High School's, um, winter concert is at, also at the Taylor County Middle School Auditorium. It's easier to sit there, of course, at six o'clock, and theirs is on December fifteenth. So again, the high schools is on December fifteenth at six o'clock. The middle schools is at, is on the nineteenth at six o'clock, both taking place in the middle school auditorium. Um, the high school also has a lot of courtyard lunch activities planned that last week of school, um, just to keep kids engaged, because they'll be taking, they'll be doing their final tests and their, um, semester exams, and it's just to kinda get them all, um, give them a little relief during lunch. And then December the twentieth at noon, our district office will have, um, a luncheon, and you all are invited to come to that.
What was that day? Twenty?
Uh, December twentieth at noon.
That's a Wednesday? Yeah.
No, can't hear you. Yes, you're also, I'm sorry, you're also invited to the SNAP Christmas party on December the twenty-first. Um, it's going to be catered by Mama's Italian. Um, Ms. Charlotte, it's amazing, she's already set up gift bags and we've all started putting things in there, but we're very excited about us all, um, attending the SNAP Christmas party again, that is December the twenty-first, and we're excited.
Where is it gonna be?
It's gonna be there.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And they're gonna, we're just gonna have it catered.
That's on a Thursday, right?
And they may have some surprise.
Friday, Bonnie Sue.
I don't know. I heard some sleigh bells might be there. I don't know.
Oh, I'm not in on the twenty-second.
Okay. So the district's on Wednesday, district's on Wednesday and the.
So where you stretch your pants?
I do that every day.
Excited, I'm excited. I'm excited to celebrate with them. We, um, they had a great little Thanksgiving get-together and, um, I was dealing with something, so I had got to come in at the end, but, um, I mean, it was amazing, and they were, our SNAP program, they are, those, those young men and women are, um, very happy to share things that are going on. So I would encourage you, if you can come, and if you can only come to once, skip ours and go to that one.
Will you email us those dates?
I absolutely will.
You didn't write them down? I was writing them, but I know that I got something wrong.
I sure will. I'll get those emailed to you tomorrow.
You said the twenty-second first and then just twenty-fourth.
Okay. Thank you. Very much.
And they're also, well, actu-, actually, they have another field trip before that. The district staff is funding the one, like, we're shipping in for the, for the one that's being catered, but, um, but they're doing another one on December twelfth at the Huddle House that they put together.
Oh.
So, I mean, I don't know what your calendar's like, but, um, did they tell us what time they're going to Huddle House on the twel-? At eleven? Okay. We got time to show it to both of them. They won't turn us away. They're amazing.
Is that it?
Yes, sir. That's it.
All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Ball, I understand we got to have, we need an executive session. Anything else you need to?
No, we just need, need a short executive session.
Ms. Dunell?
Yeah, um, I just want to, um, congratulate, um, Ms. Maynor on her recognition, um, tonight, as well as all those other, um, employees that has been recognized far as being teacher of the year or a non-instructional employee of the year. Congratulations, um, you know, the work they do is so very, um, critical and important, so we wanna make sure that we are able to recognize everyone. Last week, me and, um, Ms. Bonnie Sue and Ms. Brenda and Alicia, we got the opportunity to attend, um, the seventy-eighth FAS and, um, FSBA, um, annual joint conference down in Tampa. Me and Brenda was down there for the whole week. So, um, that was a first. So it was very impactful. We had, um, several opportunities, you know, to engage with our colleagues across the state. And so there's always a good time for us, um, as board members and superintendents, as we had some very impactful, um, webinars and, um, just professional development opportunities that was afforded to us. Um, me and Brenda got to partake on that Tuesday in a Google lead, which was very, um, insightful and very impactful. And then just the keynote speakers on all three days went from, you know, leadership to, um, recruiting and retention and importance and significance of that, as well as on the last day, it was one on AI and artificial intelligence. So, um, it gave me like a really different perspective, um, I think this past November marked a year for ChatGPT. And I just really hadn't really, you know, really did my research in knowing, you know, the different ways that, you know, it can be impactful across all different marketplaces, but just the role it would play far as education and just, you know, um, where, you know, where it currently in regards to technology. So we had that opportunity and I really enjoyed that. And, um, just coming back home after being away from a week and then, you know, events that happen Friday night, but I just want us as a district, um, to just keep in mind, no matter what is going on, that at the forefront of everything is how we, you know, look at our relationships and make sure we're being impactful and just doing whatever we can to continue, you know, um, assess those relationships and just making sure that we're having, um, the communication that we need that's in our schools, with our parents, our staff, as well as our community. And, you know, our parents, because that's really, you know, why we're able here to do what we do. So I just pray, you know, as we're going in this holiday season, we just, you know, ended Thanksgiving with a month of Thanksgiving, but just during this holiday season.
We're right in the middle of the, A&amp;I is, I remember, I don't know if y'all remember last year, I said A&amp;I is the future. A&amp;I is like Google was. It's like the internet was. It's gonna change the world. And if our district can get ahead of that, that would be great. We're also in the middle of deregulation, uh, with the high, the, the school system is being in the middle of that, and hopefully we'll have that ironed out by the end of June. It was some, talking about the keynote speakers, there was a, a guy there, he was a principal, and he actually loved to kiss guitars and all the rock singers and all that, and he showed a lot of slides, but he had his, I wish Kiki had been there when I hear this, or Heather. Uh, he starts in their junior year. He said, "I have all these kids graduating and they're just leaving us." He said, "Junior year," and I say, "What can you do in this district? I, I'll give you a job. You sign up Monday, Wednesday, Friday, you can work for me on Tuesdays and Thursdays." And he's, so he's not, not just as a teacher, but anything in the district where there's a job that's needed, he starts recruiting them their junior year and then he starts their, you know, the, um, their senior year. But he was really good. He got up there and played his guitar and had his junior high school sing with him and, uh, he, he was just really good. So, and then there was another, um, lady that we were at breakfast and they said, "Excuse us, we have to go." She was a superintendent, but she was also a principal. She had to get up during breakfast and go do the announcements at the school and then come back. So we're not, you know, that, we're spread thin everywhere, not just in Taylor County, but, I mean, I thought that was really neat. Her whole staff got up, went with her, did the announcements, come back to breakfast. So, um, if you, if you ever get a chance to go and, and the district gives you opportunity to go to one of those, it would be great if you could. And it would, teachers especially, anybody, I think it would be good for them to go. But other than that, looking forward to Christmas, looking forward to all the programs. I apologize if I don't make it to all of them, because, you know, it's hard, I can't take off like two or three days in a row, um, and I don't get a lunch hour. To be, I don't, I don't get a lunch hour. People are like, "You get a lunch hour, you can do this and..." No, I don't get a lunch hour, so. Anyway, another thing I've got in my hand, came out today, is the governor's budget. It's got a lot of, this is not, this is really rare. It doesn't come out usually until like nine weeks into the legislative committee, has started in January. This is early. So, uh, I don't know if it's good or if it's bad, but I haven't, we haven't digested it, but it, uh, if you have an opportunity to go online and look at it, you'll find some really interesting things for Florida, not just for teachers, but for the whole state of Florida. And one small little thing, I was telling everybody that I picked up on it, is now when you buy your, um, pets medications over the counter, you don't have to pay taxes on them. So, and other than that, that's all I have, and I hope you all, well, I'll probably, will we have another meeting? We will. I'll see you again on the nineteenth.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Ms. Mathis?
We have, next Tuesday, we have the joint workshop with the county commissioners on the redistricting.
Yes, we do.
At six PM. So that's something that if you're not following, it will affect all of us. And, um.
Good for you. Not much.
Right. Yeah. So that was, it's gonna be in the county commissioners' meeting room, not ours, but we will be there at a workshop. And, um, anyone who has any input on it, really encourage y'all to be there, just so you can follow along with it. It could change what district, where you live, it could change your voting district, depending on your address. It's, our lines are gonna be redrawn and, um, they have to be, because we're, we are in violation of, of several statutes right now, because our percentages are way out. Yeah. More, they need to be more equitable, as Brenda said. So that is next Tuesday, again, at six PM. And I am looking forward to the Christmas parties as well. I hope I don't miss a single thing. I know that as far as Steen Hatchie, we have a, um, the, we have the rack-up thrift store, Santa shop for all the kids, and that's where they, they come over and I think everything in the store is a dollar, and we wrap presents for their whole family. And, uh, we save things up all year long to have presents for everybody, from siblings to children to moms and dads. Dads are the hardest. And then we, they have a shopper that, that goes along with them. We wrap it and put it in their Santa shop, and then all the money that they spend there gets donated back to the school. So it's a fundraiser for the school and it's also a chance for the kids to get the shop for their families and give their families presents. So, um, that is next Monday and Tuesday. If anybody would like to join in and volunteer, it will be in the morning before lunchtime. It'll be done. And then also, the, I have the dates written down, the winter band concert also is that Tuesday. And, um, Ms. Craggar, I thank you very much for coming up and talking to us and giving us a viewpoint. You know, that, that's important. It's important for us to hear that. And you too, Ms. Charlotte, always, you, I love hearing from y'all and hearing, you know, what you have to say. Sometimes I feel like there's a, a wall, you know, and I love when, whenever you get a chance to stand on top of it and shout at us, sort of.
I don't enjoy the shouting part. You could just say it.
I don't mean shout. Y'all know what I meant. And don't take me literally, ever, when I say something like that. But, um, I'm looking forward to the new position and, and that we've established tonight and hoping that run, makes for a smoother running program. Ms. Scherz has worked really hard on that and getting it the way she wants it to be for our district, and I think it'll make a big difference. So also, and I think that's it for me for right now.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Carlton?
Yes. Uh, again, reiterate a little bit that Deidra said, but congratulations to Ms. Maynor and all the others that, that have been recognized, uh, through, through the instructional and the non-instructional, um, choices. Um, the, talking about the conference last week is probably one, is probably the best conference since I've been going, and that's been several years, that I, I, I went to. It was really, really, uh, what I call impactful. But with AI, uh, the, uh, speaker really, uh, kinda took a dive into teachers' plans, how you could use AI for teachers' plans. And even for, and even for student uses, you know, open, but, and there was, you know, they, last year, this time, when we went to conference, they were, "Oh, no, you know, y'all gotta be careful with AI." You know, it's, it's, it's not necessarily a good thing. And now it's kind of a.
It's here.
It's, it's, and I can't remember how many million, y'all remember what the million?
No.
It was a huge, uh, number that they said, that they had had, um, using it in, and there's just more and more every day coming out there. So that was really good. Thanks to all in the district for the hard work. It's, um, we, we do appreciate it.
Uh, one of the things we've, there was three districts there that talked about the late starts.
Oh, yeah.
That was very insightful. From what we heard, it hadn't helped a bit on anything. So I know we can't do anything about it this year, but my intention is to lobby as hard as I can to get that deregulated.
Okay.
I don't think it'll probably happen, but.
Okay.
That's true.
All right.
I lobbied really hard against it, but.
Well, thank you. In closing, uh, just simply say, appreciate, uh, once again, all the hard work that's going on, all the good things that's happening in our district. Doesn't happen just by chance. It takes a lot of hard work and everybody putting in their, their, uh, talent and their time and initiative to make things happen. Always appreciative of, uh, folks who support our district. I learned this afternoon that, uh, over at the Perry Primary, I think we got, uh, to a couple of classes of second graders who, um, had a, a parent of one of their children that's part of it, but also he has a business, Young Striping. Uh, they took these classes as we speak there in Swanee County and looking at their lights and so forth, Christmas lights, and they even, uh, you know, uh, calling, paying the cost of the bus to take the kids over and also, what kid don't wanna go to McDonald's? They're paying for a McDonald's meal. calling, paying the cost of the bus to take the kids over and also, what kid don't want to go to McDonald's, they're paying for a McDonald's meal. But I, but, you know, I, when I learned it, I told them, I said, I appreciate it and I'll make note of that this evening. So we appreciate Young Striping for doing such and for all in our community that supports our schools in some fashion and form. It takes everybody working together. Other than that, we thank you all. Yes, ma'am.
I apologize, I need to add one more thing, Ms. Pure has something she wants to give you all. We have been, you know, I talked to y'all before and I apologize.
I read that, that's very nice.
But, um, we have partnered with Grand Canyon University.
Yes.
To help with, um. We've got this early childhood education, so this is one more avenue for our parapros or for, for people who have just not finished a bachelor's or may even want their masters. Is there anything else you want to say that that's just another avenue that?
It's a good thing, and I think what made it more relatable to me was Aunt Holger, I would call her, but she's been the director. She now retired and started working for G C U. Pain to us that she'd been presenting in other counties, but she comes from education at the same level we're at and, and, and really made it real to Ms. DeShirrs and I. So we've been talking back and forth and so we want, you know, I want everybody to come that doesn't have degrees, but mainly the governor and other people are working on people that have those AA degrees and some kind of bridge program. And this is just one of the many that we're going to get into. Friday, I went to Ms. Hires' classroom, which is, all of our students are taking those education, childhood education, certifications, and they participate at the primary school. Both with all of those classes Friday, just trying to talk to them about my perspective on education and things that they could do and salaries and what are, what are their future, what they foresee in the future and just go and come see us at the district office, don't just look at the primary school. They should visit other schools and I even mentioned that to Ms. Hires, maybe taking them to other schools and see how, maybe primary is not their age that they want to get a degree. Go to the elementary and the middle and see maybe if that would be an area. But anyway, sent this out to the school district, y'all all got it. Really want to try to promote it on the agenda a couple more times. We'll meet that afternoon in the media center and forward to hearing more stuff. And I have other things that, you know, part of education and.
Is this something that is available to the community too, or just to district employees?
There's a lot of scholarships available if you're looking at going into education.
Okay.
And that's what Jus is talking to us about it, but I don't mind if anybody's talking.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you for that information and certainly getting that information out to, to the district and to the community.
The community especially, this transfer friendly part on here sounds really, really good. And I, this is like something you want to drop out of airplane to everybody, you know.
And those things that are coming too, they're. Right, we've got to get a hold of what we want to do and.
Okay, well, this brings us down to our adjournment time and just bear in mind that we do need to have an executive session. So we'll take about three, four, five minute break and then we'll go into our executive session. But do I have a motion to second?
Motion.
That we adjourn.
Second.
Ms. Carlton makes that motion, Ms. Mathis seconds it, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming.